Mr. England.
Present.
Mr. Kessler.
Present.
Ms. Mills.
Present.
Mrs. Rettman.
Present.
And Mr. Turpin.
And accounted for. All right, item two, special recognition pledge of allegiance. So, Mr. Matt Roberts?
Good evening, board members, Dr. Coats and the rest of the cabinet and all of our guests. Thank you for inviting us, thank you for inviting inviting the sixth grade center to come open up the board meeting. It's a special night to be here as we honor one of our academic all-staters here that has continued the tradition that went through the sixth grade center and has has made us proud and the district proud. We'll we'll honor him shortly. And all three of these young people have made us proud throughout the school year. And Mr. Ben Burwell is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And and I know some of you were at our Veterans Day Assembly on November 11th. I know that Mrs. Rettman, Mrs. Johnson, some others were there. And and Ben took it upon himself to get his Boy Scouts together and some of our Girl Scouts. And he was on the microphone in front of 800 people doing the presentation of the colors. So he is going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance this evening. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ben Burwell.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ben, do you have any guests here tonight? Do you want to introduce any of your guests that are here this evening?
My dad. He...
That's it?
Just my dad.
And and he is, he has a a meeting, scout meeting tonight at 7 o'clock, right? So you're going straight from here to a scout meeting? All right, we are going to share, we are going to have, Ms. Elizabeth Kemp is going to share the sixth grade center word of the week, Great Expectations Word of the Week. And I think all four of these students are exemplifying that. But we each week we have a different word of the week that we announce. And we selected Elizabeth because she was our spelling bee champion. And so during that competition, which was very, very, very competitive, many times she said, could I have that word in a definition, please? And she represented us well at the statewide level. So I'll turn it over to Elizabeth Kemp at this time.
The word of the week this week is attentiveness, giving full concentration to one's actions. And one thing that I love about the sixth grade center is the teachers. They're so kind and instead of just making us sit at our desks and do boring work all day, they make their lessons fun and we get to do fun, hands-on activities.
All right, I can't let her get away. Who who would you like to introduce that's here with you this evening?
Um, my mom and my dad.
And when she competed at a statewide level, tell how you did at the at the spelling bee against the sixth graders all across the state.
I got sixth.
All right, and these, and our word of the week, attentiveness, all four of them have exemplified attentiveness. And our next two, we have Madison Edwards and Lorelei Shuck. And there's a there's a connection there because as we recognize Abram here momentarily, these two young ladies, early during first semester, the Owasso chapter of the VFW, Veterans of Foreign Wars, they they came and visited us, the seventh grade center, the eighth grade center, and Rejoice, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And they invited students to participate in the annual Patriot Pen writing competition. And there were more than 260 entries of grade six, seven, and eight within the city of Owasso for Owasso and Rejoice. And these two young ladies, Lorelei was the champion, finished first, and Madison finished third. And out of all those, and the second place winner was a member of our eighth grade center. So we so we swept it. So these young ladies are such good communicators, we wanted them to come and and communicate with you as well. So who would like to go first? We'll go with Lorelei, since she since she placed first in the Patriot Pen, we'll go with Lorelei first and put her on the spot.
My favorite thing about the sixth grade center is the amazing teachers who work hard to help us learn new things every day. The teachers at this wonderful school are well organized, have brilliant slideshow presentations, and use personal experiences to help us learn. As sixth grade choir and band student, I have a lot of things to practice, but the teachers at this school make it fun and exciting. Moving from elementary, school can be a big transition, but the staff at the sixth grade center make it so much easier.
And Lorelei, who would you like to introduce? Who who came with you tonight?
Uh, my mom and dad, who are teachers at the high school, and my little brother Grayson.
One thing I love about the sixth grade center is the freedom to make your own decisions. At the sixth grade center, you have a chance to do what you need to succeed. The teachers are always willing and wanting to help us become successful and independent students. The teachers not only want me to be a great student, but also encourage us to explore other activities like sports, art, book club, student council, and mentoring to help build our character. I am so thankful for the sixth grade center for helping me become a better person.
And Madison, who who came with you tonight, who would you like to introduce?
My mom and my sister and my LA teacher.
Yes, I was going to introduce that. Yeah, so where is Mrs. Rice? Ms. Casey Rice, she is actually the English teacher of these three young ladies, the spelling bee champion and two Patriot Pen recipients. We appreciate Mr. Murphy being here as well. And so I can get long-winded at times, but we appreciate the time and thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much, students and Mr. Roberts. Please come to the dais for a picture with the board.
Okay, that was that was great. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Appreciate your enthusiasm. Item three, special recognition, Ms. Tiffany Cooper, Abram Smith, Academic All-State. If you'd already hear, Mr. Roberts gave the intro, so.
Good evening, thank you for having us. Excited to have Abram with us here again to recognize him for Academic All-State. Such a huge accomplishment, only 100 high school seniors from public schools are named each year for Academic All-State. Academic achievement, leadership, community service, these are the things that go into that. So very excited that Abram received this recognition. And I asked one of our amazing teachers, who Abram has had for, I believe, three or four classes, Ms. Seymour, to write a brief intro. I wanted to honor him from her perspective. So I'm going to read this that Ms. Seymour sent to me. Abram Smith is an amazing young man who might just solve a math theorem that we have looked at for ages. He loves mathematics, specifically the mechanics, but mostly the theory. Abram brings various aspects of mathematics to his math class quite often, and it is fascinating to watch. He is so smart and quirky that you love to be around him. He is so meticulous, he wants to know the minute details of his mistakes. He wants to be an engineer and there's such an impressive ambition. I know I will see him with his PhD one day. He's an impressive student. Abram wants to go further than the ordinary, he always wants more. He engages in so much. He plays the violin so well that he tutors others, he golfs and also tutors them as well. He authored a book in which he was published called The Quantum State. He is a member of the SIAM Math Challenge Team. He was on the junior team and just competed on the senior team this past Saturday. It's a math modeling program that spans 15 hours of work. He is quite creative and innovative. Abram is on the Structure Odyssey of the Mind team. They build a 15-gram balsa wood structure. He tested one that held over 500 pounds. Abram is also so well-rounded and is the president of the National Honor Society and has implemented many innovative programs and programmed a way for us to track everyone's service hours for the year. He is also the president of Spanish Honor Society. He spends many hours at his church with his youth youth group and music ministry. He is quite diverse in his activities, but still finds time for hobbies of reading and music. And he was here last month to be recognized as a national merit semifinalist. According to Ms. Seymour, and and we can confirm this, Abram never disappoints and always gives his task his all. We're very proud of you, Abram. Congratulations.
I really appreciate Mrs. Cooper and of course Mrs. Seymour. I'm not sure if she's here tonight, but I appreciate those kind words. First and foremost, I do want to give all of the glory and praise to Jesus Christ for allowing me to stand before you today. I think that the board and the district has really created an atmosphere, especially for me at Owasso High School, to be able to excel both within and outside of the school. But I especially want to give thanks to all of the teachers and administration at Owasso High School. I think one of this Academic All-State program was to write an essay. And part of the essay was reflecting on a high school experience and a specific assignment or project that allowed us to just have a broader picture on life. And I actually spoke of Mr. Andrew DiBella. He was the East Campus Teacher of the Year this year. But I actually talked about a project that I had in his Advanced English II class. And it was actually a project on Hamlet. As someone wanting to go into engineering, usually literature isn't something that's, you know, at the top of my mind. But through Mr. DiBella's class, I was able to grow in my understanding of really what it means to be and and to experience life. I think my my physics and calculus work has paired really well with that surprisingly. And as I look back at Owasso High School, the school has given me the chance to combine two seemingly separated fields like literature and mathematics and somehow combine them into something to give me a fuller picture on life. And I think that that diversified view on life is something that I will definitely take from high school and will carry me further. So thank you all again, and I I appreciate it. And of course, I also wouldn't be here without my family to support me. I have my mom Jennifer, sister Clara, dad David, and then my grandparents as well here tonight. So, thank you.
Abram, Abram, don't sit down. We're, we are so proud of you and just all of your accomplishments and your future is so bright. So congratulations with everything. Please come in front of the dais for a picture with the board.
Okay, now would be a good time for you to exit if you don't want to stay, so. But you're welcome to stay, but we understand.
They figured it out.
Okay, moving on to item four, reports to the board. In the leadoff position is Dr. Margaret Coats.
Good evening. Wow, it's so fun to start the board meetings with all that positive energy and see students from all across the district. So really proud of our sixth grade students and of course Abram. He's got a bright future ahead of him. Just want to provide a brief update. Last time that I talked to you, February, it was one day before our bond election. As you know, we had one proposition pass, which was our buses, and one proposition did not. And that was our main, that had all of our main projects on there, and it failed by 59 votes. Since that time, we've been working diligently to get feedback across the district. There have been two surveys sent out. One was sent immediately following the the election to all of our parents, all of our teachers, and as many community members as we could, we could get. That survey, we had almost 2,000 responses on that survey. And then another survey was sent out once we got the election addresses, those specific people that voted. And so that survey was sent out about a week ago, maybe more than a week ago. And those those responses are trickling in. We only have had about 317 responses so far, so we'll just keep that survey open until until it kind of just stops. But the results of the surveys both so far show that the number one concern was the total dollar amount of the of the investment and the worry about possible property taxes increasing. So we've been analyzing that data and we will continue to analyze that data as it comes in. But we are encouraged, as we've spoken to teachers, our administrators, principals, chamber, the city, our parents, and our community members, and all are supportive of trying again. And so that's what we intend to do. But again, we need to continue to seek feedback. And with this feedback that we've gotten so far, we've worked with our bond consultant to determine a way to bring the dollar amount down in response to this feedback and a no-tax increase while still keeping needed projects for our students. Our goal is to spend the next few months visiting with groups face-to-face to talk about the projects and to seek any additional feedback before we bring the revised proposition or investment proposal back to the board for approval in either June or July for a September election. So we are going to just do that after spring break, just work these last nine weeks of school, seeking additional feedback before we bring a revised proposition. We will have to look at cost as costs continue to rise. And so again, just analyzing the feedback and analyzing costs to bring another proposition. Again, also in February, we had distance learning days. It doesn't seem like, just a few weeks ago, we were doing distance learning days with it 80 degrees outside right now. So I just want to give a big thank you to all of our teachers and parents for working together to support those, support learning on those distance learning days. Just so proud of our teachers for their investment and our students to ensure that quality instruction is happening on those days. Last week, we celebrated Public Schools Week, highlighting the importance of public education all week long. Also visited the Capitol with a small but mighty group of Owasso PLAC members. Had a great time visiting our legislators. And then this March, we had Read Across America last week. And that's a great time to read to students and celebrate the importance and fun of reading. And I I know many of the board members went out and read at school sites, too. Spring sports are well underway. And as we are wrapping up winter sports, our boys' basketball team has made it to the state tournament. And we play actually our first game tomorrow night at the fairgrounds. And I thought the fairgrounds had been remodeled. I was mistaken. They're going to tear it down after this, after this tournament, and they're going to build a new one. So this is the last state tournament to be held in this fairgrounds. And I actually played in the state tournament there twice, many, many years ago, in the fairgrounds. So it's kind of cool that we get to be there for this last state tournament. We play Deer Creek at 7:30. And then we have the, if we win, we play Friday, and then if we win again, in the finals on Saturday. Our baseball team leaves for Florida to play in a big tournament. They leave tomorrow afternoon. And then we had a track meet last Friday that was a huge success. And it was really neat to see all, everything working and all the runners there, and it was a great day. And just wanted to also let everyone know that we do have, we've been working to try to get our cameras in and get access control going for our track. And so we are hoping that we can open it up to our walkers in the community and those that want to use the track after spring break. And we're looking at times in the morning that we can have it open and then times in the evening on a daily basis that we can have that open. So our goal is after spring break, but we want to make sure everything is completed on the track before we do that. And then technology, another thing over spring break. You've heard Russell talk about our phones and replacing our phone system. And we actually had a special meeting during those distance learning days in the snow. So thank you to those of you that were able to make it up for that. But we, everything is going according to plan, and we are going to change over the phone system during spring break. And then when we return, we have a collaboration day. And so we're going to do all the training for those employees that need it for that phone system on that day. And then just mark your calendars, just something to put down. After spring break, on March 26th, from 6:30 to 8:30, we will have our Evening of Distinction. So March 26th, Wednesday, is when we will celebrate our Teacher of the Year, Support Employee of the Year, and Substitute of the Year. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Officer, Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, good to see you guys. Spark summer camps are gearing up. Mrs. Zemwalt has been actively recruiting folks to work those camps. And so far, we have 27, which is a great turnout. We're excited. We're expanding that this year. You might remember to middle school as well. So we'll have some summer camps, both at the sixth grade center as well as at Mills Elementary. It's going to be a good time for all to have also geared up for the Great Expectations Summer Institute. We'll have several teachers participating in that week-long training this summer. Also, as Dr. Coats just mentioned, we're we're in the Teaching and Learning Department. We're preparing for the Evening of Distinction. It's going to be a lot of fun on March 26th. And then we do have our Collaboration Day on March 24th, just after spring break. Getting ready for that as well. In the Special Services Department, Special Olympics are just around the corner. Excited about that day. The send-off is one of the best days of the year, so we're looking forward to that. And then also, the, Mrs. Duncan brought in a guest speaker, guest trainer, I guess would be a better way to describe that, to train 20 of our folks in functional behavior assessments as well as behavior intervention plans. Really excited about that. It'll be good for the district as a whole to have those folks trained in those areas. And then Fine Arts has been booming. Mr. Barber is keeping himself busy. I hope you got to go to the musical last week. It was great, it was hilarious, had a good time there. Link-up concerts are happening, it's that time of year for that to occur, and that's happening this week. Middle School Choirs, again, did a, did an amazing job and received superior ratings in both concert and sight-reading. Middle School Band goes to contests this week. Also, you might notice on the expense report, encumbrance report, that there are some some heavy expenses in the art area, just curriculum adoption. It's important to note that those are both six-year adoptions. And so that will be a once every six years expense. Chris did a great job finding curriculum and talking to those reps and getting them to give us a six-year bid, which will in the long run save us money because things don't get cheaper over six years. So we're excited about that. And lastly, 103 total Fine Arts All-State winners in in the department across, departments across the district. Again, just a great year for Fine Arts.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Curraner, District Services.
Yes, good evening. Last week, we had our Future Chef competition. And so that allows students from across our district, all our elementaries, to submit recipes and prepare a dish in our school kitchens. I was not able to attend this year, but the pictures I saw were amazing. Presentations were really restaurant, restaurant quality, for sure. I think Mr. England was a judge, Mrs. Zemwalt was there. So if you want some more details, you can ask them. At the end of the night, Gemma Patton, a fourth grader from Stone Canyon, won the event and will advance to the state competition. She had prepared lumpias, which I believe is like an Indonesian spring roll. And so I, again, I just saw the pictures, but it looked amazing. So very excited for another successful year of Future Chef. This, it is springtime, and we know the weather can get stormy around here. So just as a reminder, we do subscribe to a weather service. It's an app, we call, it's called Perry Weather. And so on the high school campus, on And so on the high school campus, on the top of Mr. Duffield's office, actually, we have equipment that will sound sirens if we have a lightning strike within a ten-mile radius. And our protocol is that if there's an outdoor sporting event, then you have to pause play for thirty minutes from the last lightning strike. So those sirens at that campus, it takes the guesswork out of it. It just, hey, those are the sirens, we gotta shut down play. And so you can hear them at all of our outdoor venues on that campus. Then after thirty minutes, there is an all-clear siren that also goes off. I believe it's three. It'll burst a three that tell you that it's all clear, and you can go back to play. All of our head coaches and principals have the app on their phones, so regardless of whether they're here or they're away, they still get those alerts. Our principals have them for recess and that sort of thing to know if there's lightning in the area as well. We also have twenty-four-seven access to a meteorologist. And so we will utilize them a lot. We utilize the meteorologists probably more so for our snow events that are coming, and they'll keep us up to date on that. So I say all that just to remind people of the season that we're coming into, and that we'll be doing our best to make sure we're staying on top of things to keep everyone safe in that regard. We're still working through some punchless items at the track, but they had their first track meet last week. Heard great feedback from it. So I've got a few pictures up here. So first of all, you've seen this rendering up here for a while. Next picture, please. There's the final product. So we had our ribbon cutting out there a week ago, and just real exciting that that's, I mean, that's the photograph. We've seen the rendering for a long time. It really came to fruition, and the track meet, I heard, was a great success. Certainly learned some things. First time you have a new facility, you're, there're gonna be a few bumps in the road, and they're working it out. But real excited about that. Next one, don't have a lot of construction pictures, but I wanted to show you it in action. And so you can see the stands there, full of spectators as they're about to run a race, the hurdles. Next one, getting ready to run around the curve there. You can see the scoreboard in the back. Had tremendous compliments from other teams. We hosted eleven teams. But spectators and coaches, Brock Crawford and his team, phenomenal, because they put the times right up there on the screen as the events were finishing. They just pop right up. And so coaches knew exactly where their athletes stood. In fact, I had called, or one of the other coaches had called me, a friend, and he said, "I was looking for my assistant coach, and I called him, said, 'Where are you at?'" He says, "I'm just down here, just leaned up against the goalpost, watching, watching the scoreboard." It was like he's in his living room, watching, watching the game. So it really is a great venue. Next one, Jordan. There we have Coach Parker, just excited for him to be able to host events like that and be, he's so proud of it. He's done a tremendous amount of work and input into that facility, so real excited for him. And this is just a pretty neat picture. You all have seen Bella. She's been here usually with gold medals around her neck. And she is running the corner there, giving the deuces as she comes around with the, with the, with the picture in the back. So really kind of a neat, neat time that we actually got it open, and it's getting used, and it's great. So real excited. Moving on to Hotson, it's coming along, it's on track, it's enclosed now. And so you can see this is the cafeteria, and you can see there where the stage is gonna be at. So I think that may actually be poured now. Is it, Mr. Knowlton? Not, not quite? Maybe getting poured very soon. Next one. Again, this would be the classroom space, so it's covered now. And then one more, I believe. Okay, all good. On pace still to be open in August, so coming along nicely there with that storm shelter and additional classroom space. That is very much needed out there for special ed, so real excited about that project. That's all I got for tonight. Again, thank you for serving Owasso Public Schools, and go Rams!
Okay, thanks, sir. Next, Mr. Russell Thornton, Continuous Strategic Improvement.
Hi, good evening. I am here to discuss the progress that we're making with our CSI plan and specifically Goal Area Four, which is Ram Resources. I'll start off with Objective One. So our administrators and teachers and students have been working diligently to find creative ways to enhance our student leadership, student-led clubs, and character education programs. And I'm pleased to announce that at this point, we have eighty-seven percent of our school sites with leadership programs now. We started out at fifty percent there, so that's a huge improvement there. Ninety-three percent of the school sites now have character education and life skills programs, so we've made some improvements there. And just last week, several of the building principals at the high school, maybe all of them, and students participated in PD that was titled Ignite to Unite. And the purpose of this PD was to develop strategies to improve culture and climate with our secondary schools. So while they have already initiated the implementation of this program this school year, they'll really focus, their focus will really become intense at the beginning of next school year to roll that out, and hopefully we'll see the benefits we expect from that program. Moving to Objective Two, which focuses on improving and maintaining our district infrastructure. The Facilities Improvement Plan that we've talked about several times before was a really big piece of the Long Range Master's Facilities Plan. As you'll remember, we spent a good, solid two years that I know of that, where we worked with a wide variety, a wide range of community stakeholders throughout the community and within the district to develop this Long Range Facilities Plan. We then used that Long Range Facilities Plan to help us develop our bond proposal needs. And so we're still working towards completing the objectives of that program. Brad Kirwin and their team are working very hard to stay on track with, with what we need there and meet our timeline goals with that one. In the area of technology, just an update on a few things that are going on in the Technology Department. I have ordered eight-hundred-and-fifty laptops and docking stations to refresh the teacher and support devices. I've also ordered twenty-seven-hundred Chromebooks that'll be used at the beginning of next year for our fifth-grade students or ninth-grade students, and seven-hundred of those will go back to the elementary as well. Also, we have upgraded four-hundred-and-thirty-two interactive displays now. That was one of the primary goals in the area of technology that came out of that CSI plan. And that is twenty, that means that twenty, only twenty-six percent of our displays are older than three years old at this point. In the, in the area of network infrastructure, we have recently installed the fiber connectivity switches, wireless access points for our new enrollment center, and also for the new track facility. And lastly, and Dr. Coach mentioned this earlier, we are on track to replace the phone system over spring break. Lastly, speak a little bit about transportation. So the, their primary goal this year was to, was to get all of our route buses equipped with GPS tracking systems, and that has now been done. We now have a hundred GPS tracking systems on our buses, so I think it's a little bit more than just our, it's, it's our route buses plus a few other activity buses, I believe, right, Billy? Yeah, okay. So that is done, and Billy tells me that that has been a game-changer in the transportation world. They, it, it makes it so much easier for them when parents call, and they know exactly where their kid's at on that bus, can tell them down to, within a few seconds of when they're gonna get there or get picked up, or sometimes even if a parent says the bus didn't come by, they can actually go back and look and see that, yes, it was in front of their house at, you know, seven-fifty-five AM this morning. So that's been a, been a game-changer in the transportation world. Also, I want to mention that now we, we've bought a few buses, so ninety-two percent of our buses are less than ten years old now, and we currently have five buses on order that will be arriving soon to actually increase that percentage. That's all that I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item Five, Comments from the Public Regarding Agenda Items.
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Item Six, Consent Agenda. Board to Consider and Take Possible Action on the Following Consent Agenda Items. Dr. Coach.
Yes, I would ask that you please consider approving the consent, consent agenda items as they are written on the agenda this evening.
I noticed on the activity account, the, yeah, I think it was the activity account budgets that we talked about, Philip, over the phone. The, the request for the ESC, the amount is quite larger than the OSSBA contract that we're gonna consider later.
Yes, because that's, it's just for budgeting purposes. If we need to do mailers or things like that with, as we move forward with the next proposition, so that we can use those funds from eight-oh-one, or that activity account comes from Pepsi money, so it's not general fund or bond fund. So just wanted to make sure we had enough in there. I don't see us spending that much, but just wanted to make sure we had a budget in there to do that.
Thank you.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda items I've listed.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
And Mr. England.
Yes.
Okay, Item Seven. Have an executive session in the middle of the agenda here, so it's a little unusual. But at any rate, we need to vote to convene to executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters or disclosure of information would violate confidentiality requirements of state or federal law as authorized by Oklahoma Statute Title Twenty-Five Three-Oh-Seven B Seven.
Make a motion we convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters where disclosure of information would violate confidentiality requirements of state or federal law.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Mills. Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Okay, going to move on here. Acknowledge that we're going to return to open session. Item C, statement of executive session minutes. During the executive session, the members of the Board of Education who were present were Frosty Turpin, Stephanie Ruttman, Rhonda Mills, Neil Kessler, and Brent England. Also present during the executive session was Dr. Margaret Coats, Mr. Curran Kerner, and no, Mr. Storm was not in there. So, well, hmm? So I'll strike that. Okay. During the executive session, board members discuss legal matters where disclosure of information would violate confidentiality requirements of state or federal law. This will constitute the minutes of the executive session. Was that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought so. Zeroed in on that real quick, didn't I? Okay, moving on to item eight, communication slash superintendent, Dr. Coats. Item A, board to consider and take possible action on the contract with Oklahoma State School Board Association, OSSBA for information campaigning, planning, and communication services at a cost of $2,250 as outlined in the attachment authorized the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Yes, Mr. Corbridge is going to report on this agenda item.
Good evening, board members. Yes, this is an opportunity to partner with Amber Fitzgerald and the OSSBA on some campaign and communication services as you see outlined in your attachment. This is just an opportunity to get some additional support for those communication efforts. As, you know, we heard from Dr. Coats earlier, we move forward with a potential vote in the fall and September on a revised package for the district. Ms. Fitzgerald is one of the best in the state, and I'm just excited for the potential opportunity to partner with her and tap into, again, some of her real-world experience with some of these things. So I'd just, again, and I do want to note that, you know, as Ms. Ruttman mentioned and you guys kind of talked about during the consent agenda, the funds for this contract would be coming from our activity fund, from, you know, some of those Pepsi proceeds, and are not from our general fund. So have you take any questions, but would ask that you consider approving this contract this evening.
I make a motion that we approve the contract with the Oklahoma State School Board Association for information campaign planning and communication services at a cost of $2,250 as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Yes, Mr. Corbridge is going to report on this agenda item.
Good evening, board members. Yes, this is an opportunity to partner with Amber Fitzgerald and the OSSBA on some campaign and communication services as you see outlined in your attachment. This is just an opportunity to get some additional support for those communication efforts. As, you know, we heard from Dr. Coats earlier, we move forward with a potential vote in the fall and September on a revised package for the district. Ms. Fitzgerald is one of the best in the state, and I'm just excited for the potential opportunity to partner with her and tap into, again, some of her real-world experience with some of these things. So I'd just, again, and I do want to note that, you know, as Ms. Ruttman mentioned and you guys kind of talked about during the consent agenda, the funds for this contract would be coming from our activity fund, from, you know, some of those Pepsi proceeds, and are not from our general fund. So have you take any questions, but would ask that you consider approving this contract this evening.
I make a motion that we approve the contract with the Oklahoma State School Board Association for information campaign planning and communication services at a cost of $2,250 as outlined in the attachment and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
And Mr. Kessler. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbridge. Item nine, teaching and learning, Mr. Officer. Item A, board to review policy number 5.09 for first reading. Edits, changes, and additions to the policy are outlined in the attachment.
Yes, this is just an update of the extended school year policy related to our special education department. It's been nine years since this policy's been updated, and it just needs a refresh. We're bringing that to you for first reading tonight.
Okay, no action needed on that. So we'll move on to item B, board to consider and take possible action on the proposed edits, changes, and additions to policy number 1.61 as outlined in the attachment.
Our wellness policy, again, annual update, and brought it to you last month for first reading. You'll notice that I said at your table, at your chair this evening, an additional copy shortly before the meeting, had a conversation that prompted the adding of a sentence, I believe it's page six in that packet. I bracketed and starred. We added a sentence to give a little bit more specific... to better specify. That's great. Livestreamed. To better, to better specify the smart snack regulations, and it's important to note that both of those sentences in red related to smart snacks come straight out of the USDA policy. This isn't an OASO idea. This comes straight from the USDA. So we're asking for your approval of these edits to the wellness policy.
On your change here from this evening, who's, first off, going to track how many exempt fundraisers there have been in a semester? Whose responsibility is that?
Well, it would be the site. We, it's 30 per semester per site. We don't come anywhere close to that at any site. I mean, that would be, that would cover every school. You could technically have an exempt fundraiser every school day, and at some sites, several exempt fundraisers every school day, so.
And then I'm wondering if there should be some sort of language to the effect of, "but not limited to," because when you specifically point out something like blue and gold and cookie dough, it might make people think that's all we can do.
Oh, did it say for, I thought it said for example? No?
It says such as, but I think it should be also state, "not limited to."
Okay. Such as, but not limited to? Okay. I understand. I understand. Yes, sir.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the proposed edits, changes, and additions to policy number 1.61 as outlined in the attachment.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
And Mr. Kessler.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbridge. Item nine, teaching and learning, Mr. Officer. Item A, board to review policy number 5.09 for first reading. Edits, changes, and additions to the policy are outlined in the attachment.
Yes, this is just an update of the extended school year policy related to our special education department. It's been nine years since this policy's been updated, and it just needs a refresh. Sure, we're bringing that to you for first reading tonight.
Okay, no action needed on that. So we'll move on to item B, board to consider and take possible action on the proposed edits, changes, and additions to policy number 1.61 as outlined in the attachment.
Our wellness policy, again, annual update, and brought it to you last month for first reading. You'll notice that I said at your table, at your chair this evening, an additional copy shortly before the meeting, had a conversation that prompted the adding of a sentence, I believe it's page six in that packet. I bracketed and starred. We added a sentence to give a little bit more specific... to better specify. That's great. Livestreamed. To better, to better specify the smart snack regulations, and it's important to note that both of those sentences in red related to smart snacks come straight out of the USDA policy. This isn't an OASO idea. This comes straight from the USDA. So we're asking for your approval of these edits to the wellness policy.
On your change here from this evening, who's, first off, going to track how many exempt fundraisers there have been in a semester? Whose responsibility is that?
Well, it would be the site. We, it's 30 per semester per site. We don't come anywhere close to that at any site. I mean, that would be, that would cover every school. You could technically have an exempt fundraiser every school day, and at some sites, several exempt fundraisers every school day, so.
And then I'm wondering if there should be some sort of language to the effect of, "but not limited to," because when you specifically point out something like blue and gold and cookie dough, it might make people think that's all we can do.
Oh, did it say for, I thought it said for example? No?
It says such as, but I think it should be also state, "not limited to."
Okay. Such as, but not limited to? Okay. I understand. I understand. Yes, sir.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the proposed edits, changes, and additions to policy 1.61 as outlined in the attachment.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Okay, gonna move on here, acknowledge that we're gonna return to open session. Item C, statement of executive session minutes. During the executive session, the members of the Board of Education who were present were Frosty Turpin, Stephanie Ruttman, Rhonda Mills, Neil Kessler, and Brent England. Also present during the executive session was Dr. Margaret Coats, Mr. Curran Kerner, and no, Mr. Storm was not in there. So, well, hmm? So I'll strike that. Okay. During the executive session, board members discuss legal matters where disclosure of information would violate confidentiality requirements of state or federal law. This will constitute the minutes of the executive session. Was that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought so. Zeroed in on that real quick, didn't I? Okay, moving on to item eight, communication. Superintendent Dr. Coats. Item A, board to consider and take possible action on the contract with Oklahoma State School Board Association, OSSBA for information campaigning, planning, and communication services at a cost of $2,250 as outlined in the attachment, authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Yes, Mr. Corbridge is going to report on this agenda item.
Good evening, board members. Yes, this is an opportunity to partner with Amber Fitzgerald and the OSSBA on some campaign and communication services, as you see outlined in your attachment. This is just an opportunity to get some additional support for those communication efforts. As, you know, we heard from Dr. Coats earlier, we moved forward with a potential vote in the fall and September on a revised package for the district. Ms. Fitzgerald is one of the best in the state, and I'm just excited for the potential opportunity to partner with her and tap into, again, some of her real-world experience with some of these things. So I'd just, again, and I do wanna note that, you know, as Ms. Ruttman mentioned, and you guys kinda talked about during the consent agenda, the funds for this contract would be coming from our activity fund, from, you know, some of those Pepsi proceeds, and are not from our general fund. So have you take any questions, but would ask that you consider approving this contract this evening.
I make a motion that we approve the contract with the Oklahoma State School Board Association for information campaign planning and communication services at a cost of $2,250 as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Second.
Motion been made, and second, and any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mills. Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
And Mr. Kessler.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbridge. Item nine, teaching and learning, Mr. Officer. Item A, board to review policy number 5.09 for first reading. Edits, changes, and additions to the policy are outlined in the attachment.
Yes, this is just an update of the extended school year policy related to our special education department. It's been nine years since this policy's been updated, and it just needs a, needs a refresh, so we're bringing that to you for first reading tonight.
Okay, no action needed on that, so we'll move on to item B, board to consider and take possible action on the proposed edits, changes, and additions to policy. Number 1.61 is outlined in the attachment.
Our wellness policy, again, annual update, and brought it to you last month for first reading. You'll notice that I sent at your, at your table, at your chair this evening, an additional copy shortly before the meeting, had a conversation that prompted the adding of a sentence, I believe it's page six in that packet. I bracketed and starred. We added a sentence to give a little bit more specif- specificis- fitis, to better specify. That's great. Livestreamed. To better, to better specify the smart snack regulations. And it's important to note that both of those sentences in red, related to smart snacks, come straight out of the USDA policy. This isn't a Wasso idea. This, this comes straight from the USDA. So we're asking for your approval of these edits to the wellness policy.
On your change here from this evening, who's, first off, going to track how many exempt fundraisers there have been in a semester? Whose responsibility is that?
Well, it would be the site. We, we, it's thirty per semester per site. We don't come anywhere close to that at any site. I mean, that would be, that would cover every school. You could, you could technically have an exempt fundraiser every school day, and at some sites, several exempt fundraisers every school day, so.
And then I'm, I'm wondering if there should be some sort of language to the effect of, but not limited to, because when you specifically point out something like blue and gold and cookie dough, it might make people think that's all we can do.
Oh, did it say for, I thought it said for example, no?
It says such as, but I think it should be also state, not limited to.
Okay.
So like.
Such as, but not limited to? Okay. I understand. I understand. Yes, sir.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the proposed edits, changes, and additions to policy 1.61 as outlined in the attachment.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
And Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Okay, item D, hope I get this name right. So, board to consider and take. Oh, did I catch, oh, I jumped over one? Board to consider and take possible action, propose edits, changes, and additions to policy 1.10 as outlined in the attachment, so sorry.
Yes, we brought this one to you last month as well for first reading, just asking for your approval for this edit.
Mr. Officer.
Uh, some, several, several legal precedents there, not, not always, but if a, if a DHS worker comes in with an ID and says that they need to talk to a child, there are, there are times that, that, that takes place, that we facilitate that meeting. Under, under certain investigation requirements. Yeah, that, our principles are, that happens fairly frequently, and, and they reach out to me, or Ashley, or Sarah, when that happens, if they have questions. And worst-case scenario, I, just last week, I called Beau for clarification, Mr. Rainey, for clarification on a situation. But, the attorney, yes, sir?
Yes, 'cause you guys know we are mandatory reporters, so if a child reports abuse or neglect, then we have to, we just mandatorily have to report that to DHS, and then they proceed with their investigation. And so sometimes if it is the, you know, parent or guardian that is the one that has been reported as doing the abuse or the neglect, then they may want to come talk to the student to get more details and may not notify the parents in that, in that case, as a protective measure for that student. Base, it's just based on what the report is.
And just for my gratification, are we not supposed to also report when we suspect it even though a child has not reported it?
Yes, anytime that we suspect anything, then we are required to report. Yes, that's correct. And our sites do a really, really good job, a really good job. They know our students, and so if they have any doubt or suspect anything, they just report. It's not our job to make judgment or investigate, it's just to report, and they do a great job.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed edits, changes, and additions to policy 1.10 as outlined in the attachment.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Okay, now we get to D. Board to consider and take possible action on the addendum to the contract with Beth Ann Manapella for the 2024-2025 school year at an increased cost as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the agreement.
This is another situation where Mrs. Manapella has just had more business with us than historically anticipated. And she serves an important role for our kids in the district.
I make a motion, we approve the addendum to the contract with Beth Ann Manapella for the 2024-2025 school year, and increased cost is outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion been made, and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, finance, Mr. Storm. Item A, board to consider and take possible action on the treasurer's report for February 2025.
Thank you. So you can see on, on the report that through the end of February for this year, our revenue is ahead of last year by about one and a half million, and our expenses are ahead of last year by about 1.4 million. So on the revenue side, local expenditures are outpacing where we were at last year, as are what we call intermediate. The state numbers are a little bit less, and that's because our, our state funding formula dollars are a little bit less than your, this year than they were last year, so that's not a surprise. And federal funds are slightly less at this point than last year, and that is primarily due to the fact that last year, at the beginning of the year, we still had a little bit of the stimulus money that was still trickling in, and we did not have any of that this year. So that's the primary difference, why the federal revenue is a little bit different. But overall, I think we're still right at the point where, where we would hope to be at this point. And the building fund, the first half of what's called the Red Bud Funding did come in in February, so that puts the building fund kind of above, and, and where we would hope to be at this point in the, in the year. So revenue in the building fund is about $300,000 ahead, $250,000 ahead of last year, and our expenses are also ahead. And as a reminder, those expenses are driven by that property insurance premium that we talked about in the summer, so that's the reason why the building fund expenses are ahead of where they were last year.
Make a motion, we approve the treasurer's report for February 2025.
Second.
Motion been made, and second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes. Item B, board to consider and take possible action on the marketing services proposal with Kelly Green for marketing services in support of the athletic sponsorship packages for the 2024-2025 school year at a cost of $3,000 as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Yes, sir, thank you. We are actually trying to streamline some of our processes we have. We have a radio package, we have a livestream package, we have signage sponsorship packages, ticketing packages, and that was just, just kinda grown over time. Kelly Green is marketing consultant, she actually has worked for Ascension St. John most recently, she's a Wasso High School graduate and a Wasso resident. I've worked with her through Ascension St. John for many years, and she started her own company. She's freelancing, helping with marketing proceeds. The pay her will come from our fundraising, it won't, it won't come from general fund or money that necessarily we would put in the, the sports budgets. So the money would be raised that would go in there. We, we're stepping on each other's toes. We have a contract with Mr. Gallagher, who goes out and sells radio sponsorships. Then we have, you know, over time, we've just kinda developed into Brock Crawford sells some of our Ram TV sponsorships, and then we've always done the signage, and so we're, we're competing against each other. So we're looking for some help there on streamlining it. This is not anything any of us have a background in, so we're looking to get a little help there, and obviously excited about the possibilities of new people that she would bring into, so. Sir? That would start next year, yes, sir. Current year, that would be another $12,000, so i- if she was in place right now, it would be a total of $24,000 for the school year. Yes, sir.
So there's actually two contracts, can you explain how they work?
So the one that we're actually talking about right now is for, from now, excuse me, until the end of the school year, to get started working on next year's. That's why there is not a percentage on that, 'cause that money's already been paid in, starting July 1. There'd be another contract that would move forward for the next school year, that would be a monthly plus a percentage.
So in the, in, on the agenda, it says tw- the, the second, I forget, but it, do we just, it's, well, okay.
We'll bring you the second one at another meeting, this is just for.
Well, Mr. Duffield, I wanna say that I know that I've talked to a lot of people in the community that have businesses, and because of the duplicate efforts being made, they get pretty frustrated, so I think a more coordinated effort that has some structure to it would make a lot of sense to our constituents and our business owners, 'cause, I mean, we look for those guys for support, and we need it. So I do think that if we can streamline that and, and coordinate it, I think it would be a good idea.
Yes, sir, that, that's certainly the goal.
Okay, so I think I finally under, understand what you're saying. So you've got, like, you've got different people from the district approaching the same business for different things, and you're just.
Well, a business may say, they may get approached by Mr. Gallagher about doing radio ads, and they're like, hey, that's awesome. And then they come to a game, and like, well, why aren't we on the, why aren't we on the digital board rotation? Because we're kinda all over the place. We've just grown at such a pace, and we've all been trying to do what we think was the right thing, and we're not taking care of those people who do give X amounts. We're just consolidating and making where, here's what you're gonna get for this amount of money, and this, you know, and the different steps in the program.
Is there an eventual hope that this is brought back in-house?
I, I think if we had the people to do it, I mean, sure, but I, I think it's a trial basis to see if this works. I mean, I obviously hope she would, this agreement would bring enough money in where it pays for her to do that. Now, if we had additional people that could go out and sell, and that was kinda their background, I think that would be great. It's almost a small business model within the school. Yes, sir. Now, all the billing would still go through our office. We're not gonna have somebody else bill and then, and keep track of money from somebody else back into us. The billing would still come from our office. Sir? Yes, sir. Anymore, they're just one-year contracts with a three-year agreement we asked for, and we would like to, but they can step out at any time. Okay, that, that would be where, that would be another reason why I need some help there, and bring her in, 'cause that's market needs.
Are there any hangups with a contractor of the district selling something for the district being billed by the district?
We've been doing it on the radio side, something very similar, that's where, with Mr. Gallagher, so, not that I'm aware of, Mr. Kessler.
I make a motion that we approve marketing services proposal with Kelly Green for marketing services and support of the athletic sponsorship packages for the 2024-2025 school year at a cost of $3,000 as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract.
Second.
Motion been made, and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
And Mr. England.
Yes.
Okay, item C is a duplicate, so there's no action, actually, you need to strike that, so. Moving on to item D, board to consider and take possible action on national board certified teacher stipends for 2025.
Yes, so you have that list in front of you. We have funding from the state, which amounts to $74,000, which pays those stipends for 15 of our staff members. And then we are also required, for those who maintain their certification but have expired from eligibility to be paid by the state, we are required to pay a $1,000 stipend to those individuals, so you have a list there of those four that would be district-funded as well. So if approved by the board, these would be paid this month to these individuals.
I make a motion, we approve the edits, changes, oh, excuse me, the action on the national board certified teacher stipends for 2025.
Second.
Move on to roll call, please.
Mrs. Ruttman. Yes, Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
And Ms. Mills.
Item E, board to consider and take possible action on the proposed edits, changes, and additions to policy 4.04 as outlined in the attachment.
Yes, so this was brought to you last month as a first reading, bringing it back to you this month to ask for your approval. The, the changes primarily are in section three, where we just added a few more items that will be required when these organizations submit their applications, and those added items would be copies of the bank statements for the previous 12 months, an updated list of cosigners on the bank accounts, and an updated list of current officers. And also, we've just changed references to Director of Finance to Chief Financial Officer, just to update that and make it correct. Yes, sir. It says we may request an audit, yes, sir. Is that, was that your question? Oh, that has always been in there, yes, sir. Have we considered it? I don't know that we've specifically considered it, no, no, sir. But if the, if the situation arrived, we certainly could.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed edits, changes, and additions to policy 4.04 as outlined in the attachment.
Second.
Motion been made, and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. And Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Okay, item 11, executive session. A vote to convene into executive session with the purpose of discussing the employment of a Wasso public school's principals and assistant principals listed on the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year, as authorized by Oklahoma State Statute Title 25307B1.
Make a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of a Wasso public school's principals and assistant principals listed in the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills. Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote to convene into executive session with the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools principals and assistant principals listed on the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year as authorized by Oklahoma State statute titled 25307B1.
Make a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools principals and assistant principals listed in the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mr. Rettman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Ms. Kessler.
Yes.
And Mrs. Rettman.
Yes.
Okay, item 11, executive session. I vote to convene into executive session with the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools principals and assistant principals listed on the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year as authorized by Oklahoma State statute titled 25307B1.
Make a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools principals and assistant principals listed in the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
And Mr. Rettman.
Yes.
Okay, item 11, executive session. I vote to convene into executive session with the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools principals and assistant principals listed on the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Motion been made second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
And Mrs. Rettman.
Yes.
Okay, item 11, executive session. I vote to convene into executive session with the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools principals and assistant principals listed on the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year as authorized by Oklahoma State statute titled 25307B1.
Make a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools principals and assistant principals listed in the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year.
Okay, item 11, executive session.
Second.
I vote to convene into executive session with the purpose of discussing the employment Roll call. of Owasso Public Schools principals and assistant principals listed on the attachment
Mr. England.
for the 2025-2026 school year.
Yes.
This will constitute the minutes of the executive session.
Mr. Kessler.
Okay, moving on then to number 12, board to consider and take possible action on the
Yes.
employment of Owasso Public School principals and assistant principals listed on the attachment
Ms. Mills.
for the 2025-2026 school year.
Yes.
Dr. Coats.
Mr. Rettman.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
We just had a great conversation about our amazing principals and assistant principals
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Ms. Kessler.
Yes.
And Mrs. Rettman.
in the district, and I would request that you please approve their contracts for next
Yes.
Okay, item 11, executive session. I vote to convene into executive session with the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools principals and assistant principals listed on the attachment
year.
for the 2025-2026 school year.
I make a motion that we approve the employment of Owasso Public Schools principals
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
and assistant principals listed on the attachment for the 2025-2026 school year.
Mr. Rettman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Second.
Motion been made second. Any further discussion? Oh, come on, guys. Roll call.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Rettman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Item 13, new business?
There is none.
Okay, item 14, comments from the public regarding non-agenda items. We, each individual will have five minutes to share their remarks related to the specific non-agenda item received in writing by the board minutes clerk seven days prior to the board meeting date. The total time allotted to comments from the public regarding non-agenda items will not exceed 15 minutes. I see we have one person signed up, Mr. Doug Hall.
Hello, members of the board, district staff, and teachers and public, if there's anybody here. With regard to the plans and the defeated bond, I had several concerns. Here I'll focus on the expansion of the sixth grade location to also have the fifth grade center built there. My name is Doug Hall. I am retired and moved to Owasso nine and a half years ago. I have not previously been involved in any community activities here, but on a whim, I went to the first board bond meeting operating, or meeting several months ago. My work life of 35 years was spent at a major transportation company, where I was a low-level operations and industrial engineering, where, that's where I was, low-level operations and industrial engineering management, mostly doing the grunt work for things like route planning, time studies, short-range planning, long-range planning, proposing whether or not to expand a building or to build another one. And in short, making it, the total picture as efficient and the cost effective as possible within the constraints faced and in light of the intangible factors. At the bond information meeting, there were reasons given for building the fifth grade center. However, there was no operating plan and busing plan known, only that this was to be developed later. Without knowing the operating plan, it would not be possible to calculate the ongoing costs to the district that the fifth grade center would cause and to either achieve all the goals or most of the goals. My work experience makes me believe that the extra busing and other costs of the fifth grade center in comparison to another alternative would be considerable. Consequently, I have spent considerable time and effort in lobbying the district staff with intent of having them present multiple alternatives to the board with, with the thought, with the alternative having realistic operating and busing plans, capital costs, operating costs, and intangible factors all presented so the board can make a fully informed decision and that decision can be sold to the public. If there is extra expense to the fifth grade center, do the intangible factors make the expense worth it? The fifth grade center in my estimation will push building safe buildings at the five elementary schools that do not have them far into the future. Using 2023 construction numbers, when the costs of these eventual buildings are put into the plan, the capital costs of the fifth grade center are more than $20 million higher than another alternative. That alternative is to build the safe structures with PK classrooms, kitchens, and cafeteria multipurpose space inside. Then the four locations that currently have safe centers would have expansions with PK classrooms, kitchens, and cafeteria multipurpose space. Call this the safe alternative. In, in the short and long run, capital costs are lower, busing costs are lower, less space is built, so maintenance, utility, and custodial costs are lower. Building the fifth grade center will likely increase annual expense by half a million to more than a million dollars per year. In addition, this alternative can include a restroom or two attached to each PK classroom, which you can't do if you do it the other way. Putting PK into existing classrooms at each elementary school makes the PK students use bathrooms down the hall for the decision. The safe alternative does not give some educational advantages to fifth grade students, for example, exam math, advanced math. However, it may be more a case of making those advantages available is more inconvenient than not being provided at all. And I included kitchen and cafeteria space to make sure that that wasn't a concern. The board, the bond rejection gives the district the opportunity to reconsider the goals that have been set and the methods used to achieve them. Based on experience, and I go through it again a little bit, the fifth grade building is basically going to drive your capital costs considerably, push off the other buildings that you need to do, and drive your investment costs up. So you need to consider two alternatives at least so that you can see if the marginal cost is worth the marginal benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. And that brings us to adjournment. So can I have a vote to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Rettman.
Yes.
And Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna say that I didn't go back to work. I was like, what did he have?
He's got to try to work.